Tyler wrote at 5:30. Tony told me about Ben, so.
Well, I hope Ben's okay.
Yeah, he's just hacking up a lot. Yeah, Ben and Tyler are out tonight. All right, we are on. So, um, we're gonna open this meeting of the Nottingham Select Board for Monday, October 7th, 2019. And, uh, if you'd all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to say also, now, I apologize for not making, uh, Marston, uh, anything on Saturday. I, um, just absolutely spaced it. It was totally, I have no good excuse or nothing. I was lying in bed and I, my, they went off at 9:30 saying, oh, wait a second, I was supposed to be somewhere.
You know, and there were 400 people who were looking for you.
Really, was that many people?
Swarms and swarms of people.
Okay, so, okay, so, there were four people looking for you.
So, all the shelves.
Picture that Steve posted, yeah, that was it.
Oh, yeah, I didn't even see.
I didn't see this.
Oh, you don't have it, yeah, okay. But, it, it went well. And Donna and Joe Porter's son, I forget his name.
Seth?
Seth?
I don't remember.
Was it Seth?
Nice.
Anyway, they, they threw the ceremonial shovel full of dirt off into the dirt, into that vast expanse of other dirt and, uh... Yes.
It was kind of a team effort, I think.
He did use the first, your first fork, by the way.
I saw it, I've had, uh, so many requests for interviews after that story.
All right, first item on our agenda is manifests.
Uh, make a motion that we approve the accounts payable manifest of October 7th and the payable, payroll manifest of October 8th.
I will second that.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Ananmas. Chris, are we gonna do, do we need to do another non-public at the end to take care of the other matters?
Yeah. Yeah, it'll be short, but, yes.
A and B?
Yes.
We should sort of ask for the non-public report before this.
Personnel related. Did you get that assessor's folder with the signature thing?
Yeah, he's got it, yeah, we passed it down.
Is that more than we have to sign?
Uh, not you, the other two.
Oh, me, them, cool.
That red one that's got signature stuff in it too.
Are we doing that before the?
You, I can do that non-public if you want, that's fine.
That committee's killing me, by the way.
I can give you more.
All right, next item is minutes. We have minutes from August 12th, September 9th, and the 23rd. Uh, I'd like to hold off on the 23rd until Ben and Tyler are back, just so that we know that, whether or not they had any corrections or comments or whatever. If you all are fine with that.
Yep.
On this commotion, we approve the minutes of August 12th, 2019, and September 9th, 2019.
And I will second that.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Okay. Next item, action items from last meeting. I don't believe we had any, did we? Other than... Employing contracts, that's on the agenda tonight. September 9th minutes, we just took care of that. Food for election workers.
You're gonna be talking elections again at your next meeting, uh, why don't you, uh...
Yeah.
Okay. Talk a lot then.
And then, E L is also on the agenda, all right. All right, reports from assigned boards and committees, budget?
Uh, I said in the last budget meeting, uh, for Ben, 'cause he wasn't able to make it.
Thank you for that.
Oh, I say, hey, anytime you guys need me, just, just let me know, I'm usually available and I enjoy sitting on all the different boards, it's good to reconnect with people and stuff. So, basically, the meeting was, majority is about everybody getting their ducks in a row to start the process for the budget, so, one of the things we mentioned there was our budget and getting it ready and whether we're gonna be on time for the schedule that they have, which, do you have that tentative?
We've, we've never not been on time.
Well, I'm just, this is my first time with him on this side on...
And we've always been extremely buttoned up.
So, well, okay. I don't know if that's sarcastic or not, but I was just...
No, it's true, it's absolutely true.
Absolutely, so, that was one of the concerns that I just said I was gonna address when we came here, uh, at this meeting, that we will be prepared, uh, for when it's our time to present and be ready, um, for them, 'cause they obviously have to wait for the school and everybody else's budget. Uh, but, that was one of the major concerns that we just went around the table. It wasn't really too informative about anything, we didn't talk about any numbers about anything and kinda just went over things about even the school for down the road, when they were talking about that addition, but that's still two years away, but just for CIP budgeting purposes and stuff like that they talked about. And then I just informed them of stuff that we were doing here.
If I could jump in on that budget, Tony, those cross thing, one thing off on my list, you have in your packet there the budget committee's calendar.
Yep.
The other side of that sheet is the staff version of that calendar, um, so our department heads are getting started pretty much this week on putting pen to paper for the budget. Uh, you will see it...
November 18th.
Is your first crack at what, you know, they're gonna give it to me in a month and I'm gonna, uh, work with them for two weeks and then I'm gonna come to you with the first draft, you know, we always, we always change quite a bit between drafts as things, you know, work their way through the process. Um, but if, at your next meeting, two weeks from now, when you're all here, if you have anything you wanna get back to the department heads, whether there's guidance or areas of emphasis or anything that you, um, you know, that you wanna make sure that they're thinking about, I think we're pretty well in touch with everything, but if there's anything you really wanna flush out, I'll put that on the agenda for two weeks from now and, and we'll be sure to build that into the first draft that you see.
Well, it'll be two weeks from now for the first time we're gonna see the draft here?
You won't see the, you won't see a draft from the staff for six weeks from now.
Okay.
Um, but, if there's anything you wanna put in our ear now, you know, that you want us to pay particular attention to, or, you know, if there's a, if there's numbers you wanna see, or if there's a number you wanna hit for the total, or if there's a, um, you know, things that you want us to focus on as we present, we, you know, we'll take that information now and, and try and give it back to you with that first draft.
What it is, so I could actually look at it and...
I know, it's hard to do it in upside down, but, um, but, uh, I don't, I just, I don't wanna spring it on you in six weeks and say, oh, if there are, there are things you wanna, in presentation you wanna see, um, you know, think on that and, and let us know in a couple of weeks.
11:18. That'll be our first draft.
Yeah.
Here.
Yeah, and we, we timed, we timed those so you see each draft before the committee sees each draft, um, and, and we're pretty blunt in that first draft in particular that this is a draft and we're gonna, we're gonna keep working through this, 'cause we're still five months from town meeting, so, um, you know. And we don't typically come in with a huge number and then whittle away at it, we try not to do that exercise, um, but...
We're usually pretty conservative.
Yeah. But...
That wasn't a joke, it's true.
The, um, also on budget committee, um, were they reduced this year, or does that take effect after March?
The, uh, we did not put that before the voters because they filled their slots with the ballot, so there was talk of it, but it never, that change never happened.
And there was only one person meeting at, uh, two people missing at that whole meeting, so we had a pretty good-sized board.
Yeah.
Which is nice to see.
And you, um, I think Ben's work schedule is changing, he may not be able to...
I'll take over whatever he can't do, so don't, whatever he...
Okay, if that's how you wanna do that, then...
If that actually helps out to be, the more time I can spend on it, if for some reason Ben wants to recuse himself, uh, we can talk about that and put me on that board full-time, just because of his work schedule's gonna change and he's gonna miss over half the meetings, I'll take it over to be full. It's not fair for selectmen to miss half the meetings and be on that board.
Yeah, we need somebody there each, each time.
Because it changes all the time, so if you're not there really with the diligence of being there, you know, 90%, it's just not gonna be effective working, in my opinion. So, if that's something to talk about Ben with at next meeting or whatever, just let me know.
You know, well, we can, you want to be up to it?
Are you, are you planning, or is Tyler planning?
Tyler's planning.
Okay.
I'm not, I don't sit on any board.
Well, just assessing, right?
I'll pick up your slack on assessing.
I can handle signing my name.
Yeah, one of, one of the things with this new schedule is that it, it can be variable, so...
And again, I'm just, I'm just offering that up as a service for that, 'cause I feel like anybody that sits on a board, it's just tough to keep with the upgoings, 'cause, you know, usually it's, even if, even on planning, when you sit on that, there's the reoccurring things, 'cause sometimes people are coming four to five times to that board, and, you know, if you just come in on the, on the third case, you missed the whole first and second, so you didn't even know where they got to get to that, and you're basically not doing a good deal, you know, you're just not, it's tough to do the job correctly if you're not there.
Yeah.
So, again, I'm just saying that out there, if that's an issue, just let me know, I'll be one happy to, to pick up the slack and step in to take over.
Thank you for that. And, and I, you know, I can back you up as well.
Yeah.
I had enough years on the budget committee before I came to the select...
Yeah, I spent last year, I really enjoyed being on it, so...
It wouldn't take me much to get up to speed before a meeting if I had to, so, um, all right, so we'll discuss that, um, with Ben, next time.
Yep.
All right, anything else on budget?
No, that's pretty much it.
Okay. Uh, CIP, anything?
Um, I reached out to the school again, asking for their worksheets, and I got no response.
Think they're still working on them, or...
I hope so.
Well, some of the schools said about, uh, the new programs they were writing, they're having issues with, and the coordinator who was supposed to be coordinating is not there, so now they're, it's making the, the whole process a little tougher.
You mean the curriculum coordinator?
Or some, yeah, I don't really use it. There you go, that's exactly what it was, thank you for that.
Okay. All right, 300th? I know that's not really a committee, but...
That's Tyler.
That is Tyler, isn't it? Okay. And we'll have an update from him next time. Marston?
Uh, yeah, so, um, thanks to everyone who showed up for the groundbreaking ceremony. Things are progressing out there, we have had like one little bit of a hiccup, as everybody knows, when you start projects like this, things come up that you didn't anticipate, and how well you deal with them is a sign of how efficient your team is. Um, there was a question about how much fill, um, was actually needed to level out the field to the correct height, and there was, um, one estimate that was used, and then another estimate that, you know, once they actually got on site to look at. So, there were, there was a difference between those two. All parties involved now are going back and looking at it closely, um, to kinda come up with that right number, which is probably gonna end up in the middle somewhere, um, so there's...
For what, adding or not, or having?
Between the two extremes, so, one is...
A little bit the high bid?
Yeah, it's not a, yeah, the low end of estimate, the high estimate. Um, so, that portion of it is likely going to end up costing us a little more than we anticipate, but there are other areas where we have already identified savings or will find additional savings, like one was the guardrail that I mentioned last time. Um, there's also the potential, rather than using, um, guardrails in the parking lot area to use the existing, um, big boulders that were there. Um, there was also a healthy number in, um, that initial budget for the backstops, and, um, given where we are in terms of, you know, where we started, where we can actually seed, we don't need backstops until 21, right? 21 of spring, so what we're, what we're looking at is kinda putting that on the fundraising list. So, it's, this little one particular area is likely to cost a little bit more, but everything's gonna net out. Um, and, like I said, we'll, we'll move the backstops to the fundraising list.
So, basically, we're staying on, but, we're, we're gonna stay on budget, that's the, probably what the people wanna hear.
That, that is the ultimate goal, and Matt Kukouchis is doing an outstanding job for us, um, a couple other folks in town are working really hard on that as well. And our fundraising committee, um, is solid, we've had two additional people who have volunteered to work with us on it, so, um, and again, not being able to seed until next spring buys us a little extra time on it, so...
The, uh, the topsoil situation, was, is that the fill that you were talking about for level, or is that a...
No, it's...
A coarser gravel underneath?
Coarser gravel?
Yes.
Yeah. There's still all that additional soil that we can make the decision that we wanna go ahead and pursue selling that. So, which, I can't...
That's pretty well underway, and that's gonna be part of how we make up any, any shorefalls.
Are we allowed to do that? Like, we, we can sell that excess topsoil and route it back into the project, or does it have to go into the general fund as...
We can, we can amend that contract to, say, you know, to offset the contract cost, and we can work out the mechanics of that, so that it's, um, built into the contract, uh, for the work that's going on now, so...
Okay.
You know, we, we won't actually see the cash, it'll, it'll come off the cost.
Right, right, it'll, it'll be on paper.
Yes.
But in our favor.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, we just have to iron out a, an audit trail kinda thing on it, so we can keep track of it, um, and that's, that's the direction we're headed.
But there's no legal risk financially in terms of budgeting law?
No. We're gonna be trucking some of it to the school, uh, our highway department's gonna do that for what they can use, and we'll stash a little bit of it at the pit for, you know, anything we might, we don't, we haven't identified any needs, but, um, you've seen the pile, it's...
It's big.
I, I drove up it.
Yeah. We're not gonna need that much there, so...
Yeah, yeah.
Might wanna put a couple bucketfuls in the, the well, the flower box up by the road, 'cause it's, it's a little thin.
Oh, yeah, we, yeah.
Yeah.
Saul's good.
Okay. Okay. And, planning?
That would be, uh, Tyler.
That would be Tyler, okay.
Tyler, I can tell you, planning at their last meeting, I think it was their last meeting, yeah, it was last week, had a joint meeting with the other land use boards to talk about. Uh, I think the primary point of discussion was amendments to the zoning ordinance to be developed and proposed, uh, in March. There, there've been lists of, of concepts floating around for a couple of years that we haven't gotten through, so I think they're working on prioritizing those and, uh, working with, now that we have a planner, we can actually, you know, try and make some progress on those things. Uh, so I, I think they're headed in the direction of working on some for March proposal.
There was a pretty...
Secondhand, I didn't see that.
Yeah, yeah, there was a pretty long list of proposals floating around on the planning board last year.
Yep.
But they didn't bring them all forward, 'cause the ballot was already really deep, so, so it could just be a continuation.
Yeah, there's a, and I, I don't know where they are in the priority order, but we've got kind of, we've got this structural challenge with the, the ordinance itself, it's really, it's really kinda jumbled and, uh, it's, you know, hodgepodge, so we've got this clerical thing to fix, and then we have some actual substance that the boards wanna work on, so... Those are both in the pipeline, I think.
Okay, anything else on planning? Okay, next item, town administrator report.
Uh, the work on ledge farms started this morning, uh, they're cutting down trees, uh, and we're underway, um, the, uh, work on, our, our other, uh, projects are gonna be, South Summer and Canton Court, those are gonna start in a couple of weeks, uh, reconstruction and paving there, uh, same firm ended up winning those bids, so, um, that's worked out for us pretty well. We haven't, uh, notified the folks out there, that we've been working with a few people about their driveways and things, but we have a broader notify the neighborhood kinda thing to come out in the next couple of weeks, but, uh, that'll start, I think we're in two weeks. The, uh, fuel bids are in for next year, they're down from what we're paying now, so there's a little good budget news, propane and, and heating oil are both down, might be, might be 20%, it's a big, big, big drop there, uh, so that's nice. The state budget is done, since you last met, uh, or at least since you had a conversation that wasn't about roads, um, legislature and the governor came to terms on a budget, so that, uh, happened in time and it won't affect the tax rate setting anywhere, um, we're on track for that, everything is in, we're waiting for DRA. Um, you may hear from me at any point to say, hey, we're getting really close, um, on tax rate setting. All the schools' numbers are in, uh, the schools un, unspent funds from last year's budget, that, it's, it's referred to as a surplus, or the, the give back to the town, it's, you know, people call it lots of different things, but, uh, that unspent surplus that brings the, that brings the school portion of the tax rate down, that number was bigger this year than last year, considerably bigger.
How much was it?
I, I think that, you gotta be careful, 'cause it, it shows up on the forums in different places, but I think the number that you're accustomed to, it's, the number this year is 600,000. Uh, it's been, that same number has been 300,000, you know, in prior years, so, um, that is, um, it looks like it's gonna hold the overall tax rate pretty close to, to flat for the year. That's my early guess, don't write your checks based on that, but, um, so that, uh, is pending. Also part of the state budget, um, there's a small, uh, revenue sharing to cities and towns, um, that is pretty much no strings attached, you can just throw it in the bank as revenue, or you can spend it as unanticipated revenue. Nobody from the state has actually told us how much that is, but it looks like it's gonna be about 40 grand this year, and 40 grand next year. So, once we know what that really is, I'll come to you and ask you what you wanna do with it, it's not gonna change the world, but it's 40 grand that we didn't have from the state last year, so, um, that's good news. On Thursday, the safety chiefs and our planning and code enforcement people, I don't know who else will be in the room, uh, are gonna meet with, uh, the state's E-911, uh, experts. I've talked with each of you offline and probably individually about the concept of addressing our street numbering and naming around E-911. We got a list today of everything that's wrong in town according to the numbering standards that the safety responders use to get out to things, and it's pretty shocking at how many, how many streets and how many locations are numbered inaccurately. So, uh, there's no, there's nothing, that's not new, that's been an identified problem for, since at least 2007, the state told us that we had this problem. It was news to me how really widespread it was, but, um, so we're gonna be talking with them on Thursday about what our options are in terms of addressing that.
What time's that meeting?
Uh, 10 o'clock. Uh, but I bring it up in case you're interested and you wanna come and, and hear it from the horse's mouth, uh, we'll be talking about it again, we're gonna have some decisions to make about, do we wanna touch it, do we, you know, you don't, the state's not making us do anything, um, but the, you know, our, our safety people certainly would like us to think about doing it, 'cause it's, it's, it's widespread. So, uh, I invite you to that, if you wanna sit in on the gory details, I'll send you a document tomorrow that kinda lays out where our problems are. The biggest, um, part of our discussion is not gonna be what, what should the numbers be, it's gonna be, what is the pain imposed on the community of fixing it, 'cause it's pretty significant, it's a big process, it's a lot of work, it's, uh, it means, uh, new addresses for a very large number of people.
Barrington went through that a few years ago, it was chaos.
They did the whole town all at once, and, and we'll, we'll talk about, with them about, you know, what are the pluses and minuses of doing that, do you do it in zones, or, you know, what, we're, we're way, way behind a lot of other towns that have gone through it, so they, they understand what, what it takes now. What does it cost, what is it, you know, all of it. So, we're still in the learning phases, um, my initial conversations with all of you was, yeah, it seems like a logical thing to do, the fire trucks and ambulances have to be able to find people, um, but it's not easy, so, um, we'll be bringing you more on that, but, uh, if you wanna get in from, from the beginning, Thursday is the time. And you, you may decide it's too much, I, it's, it's gonna be big changes, so, um, what, what can we do effectively and, um, you know, the risk reward, all of it, uh, it's gonna be a tough decision, so... And then last, the census is coming next year, uh, and I guess my initial question for you is, how much energy do you wanna put into the census? There's obviously some benefits in the, in the town, making sure we count everybody, there's not a lot of, it, it shows up, the population hard count shows up in some of the state funding formulas for things, so there's financial implications for accurately reflecting, uh, your total population in the census, uh, and in representation in the legislature and the county delegation, it obviously matters.
I didn't realize this was something that we were involved in.
Well, we don't have to be, uh, it's a federal...
Well, if we are, what is that?
Well, the, what, what the, I think what the census would love is if we were to do something like create a complete count committee. It seems a little bit much for Nottingham, but I don't wanna ignore it, and I don't wanna, uh, I don't wanna, you know, blow it off if it's important to you, but, um, I, I just throw it out to you and where does that sit on your list of priorities, and, uh, you don't have to answer that question now, but, um, I'll go with facial expressions, if, you know, we'll, we'll do what we can to support them and, and make sure they have all the, we're, we're collecting, you know, right now, we're tabulating some building permit information that finds its way to the census, so that they know where to go looking for people.
So, they're actually the ones that will count?
Oh, yeah, we don't go out and count, this is all about, it's all about public education and encouraging people to, to participate and respond. The hardest thing with the census is finding everybody and getting them all to participate. So, that, that would, our role would be to...
Outreach and education.
That kinda stuff, right, encouraging participation, we have absolutely no role in knocking on doors and counting noses and any of that kinda stuff.
Sounds like a newsletter article to me.
Yep.
That, that could be the level of involvement that you wanna be...
Sounds like an article in the forum to me.
Yep. Okay.
Would they have any need for a facility space or anything, or is, is their work gonna be drawn up?
We have not heard anything, it takes, it takes, I mean, they've been working on it for a year or so, but their on-the-ground work happens over the course of, I think, six or eight or 10 months, it's pretty compressed. So, nobody, other than that kinda building permit information, nobody's really asking much of us, other than that education outreach piece. But we'll give it the traditional newsletter website treatment and, uh...
Channel 22?
Channel 22, yep, uh, that kinda stuff.
Yep.
I don't think I have anything else.
Okay.
Do we have a tagline, like stand up and be counted?
Well, choose a former committee, come up with that.
So, we mentioned, either last meeting or meeting before, a last call for volunteers to organize and run the swap shop, did we get anything in the newsletter for that, or...
No, uh, Steve wrote an article about it in the forum.
Yeah.
And we've got...
Yeah. We have postings up, up at the recycling center.
Yeah.
Haven't heard...
Would Breon know, would they be asking her about it, or...
If, uh, if she heard anybody, anything, she would give it right to me, uh, I saw her Friday, I haven't, we haven't heard any interest in it from any quarter yet.
Even though the shed is closed, I mean, I, I was looking through the...
There's a, there's a mountain of stuff that appears... There's a, there's a mountain of stuff that appears there.
Scrap metal, broken electro, just stuff that really needs to either have, you know, pay the fine and dispose of it properly, or just, you know, broken metal stuff goes in the metal dumpster. People are just dropping it on the ground, so.
That was the challenge, that was the challenge with the, when you had a-
Yeah, and, and-
That was the-
Yeah, except now it's just, it's kinda still happening, but the doors to the shed are closed, so the mess is out in the open. So, yeah. I guess we'll have to think about, how, how long do we wanna give this, this open, warm welcome for, for volunteers, or do we just rip off the Band-Aid and say enough?
Well, in my mind, it's been about two years.
Yeah.
Because we went through all of this with a prior, prior board.
Yeah.
You say the word, and the shed goes away?
I'd say take it away now. That's my opinion.
I agree.
Get rid of it.
We will make it so.
But, you know, don't burn it down or anything. If we, if that triggers a group of people to step forward and say, we'll do it.
I don't know that that structure is going to survive a move.
It's a little wobbly, is it?
It's, uh, yeah. It's been in that place, in that place unmoved for a reason, for a long time. Yeah, so.
We would take care of it during after hours, not during dump operation times.
Of course, yeah, yeah. It'll, it'll find its way into the appropriate dumpster, I think, but.
Okay. All right. The other thing I was wondering about, you remember when we had the drowning at Patuka Way a couple of years ago?
Yes.
We sent a letter to the state, and we asked them to cooperate with our police and fire departments on some emergency management planning. Did that ever go anywhere? Or did they-
We talked about it. We had a couple of meetings over a couple of seasons that you were a part of.
Yeah. The goal with them was that we meet with them at the beginning of each season, at the end of each season.
Yeah, and I think we met with them last, before last season.
Yeah, we missed-
I don't think we did a year and, we didn't do anything this spring, for sure.
No, we did not do anything this spring. But yeah, I mean, we had asked for a plan, and there was never any plan.
Yeah. We could, we could certainly, now that the season is wrapping up, we could-
Kick that in the backside and maybe start getting ready for next season.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got, we got through an entire summer there without any lifeguards.
Is state or the town?
State.
State. No lifeguards?
That was my understanding.
Jeez, please.
Yeah, I, my understanding was it was swimming at your own risk all summer.
Wow.
Wow.
Not sure how I feel about that. Spent, since we're on the hook to respond.
That's unbelievable.
Yeah. Let's meet with them.
Well, our lifeguard was only staff Monday through Friday here in town. We had nobody on the weekends, and that's the busiest time.
They-
We were on our own little issue here.
They are hard to find.
Yeah. Yeah, we've never been able to find weekend coverage for that. Hard enough to find Monday through Friday. So I, you know, certainly appreciate what the state's up against, but-
Yeah.
They do have a thousand people on the beach, which is all different.
Yeah, exactly. Well, plus he was talking about, you know, having a training program, right? Because I think it's the, it's paying for the training-
Right.
That discourages a lot of young people from doing it. He was talking about starting a program where the state pays for the training, and then they kind of like have a pool of lifeguards that they can rotate around the different parks and stuff.
Right.
But apparently that didn't happen.
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Well, the other way to mitigate that risk would be to have a substation, pre-staged equipment, so our responders can just go straight there instead of having to go to the station and then back out to the lake. I know they weren't keen on that, but-
We don't have enough, you know, we don't have enough equipment.
There's also like three different departments involved in that whole thing, that whole process, right? There's like rescue, recovery-
Yeah, yeah. The fishing game, there's one piece. State police, there's another piece. There's another one. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Quite bureaucratic.
All right. Well, let's see where we can get with them.
Will do.
Is that it? Is that all you got?
Yes.
Anything else for Chris?
Nope.
All right. Moving on. General business, plowing contracts.
Okay.
Time of year.
It is. So this is not something you would necessarily see the nitty-gritty of every year, but last year, and again this year, I am bringing you the concept and the, the sample of the contract, because one of your members, Ben Bartlett's company, is going to contract with the town to provide plowing services. That's something that, that same company was doing it three years ago before Ben joined the board, but we wanted to, and they've done a good job for us, and we wanna continue using them, but wanted to bring it to you to make sure that you're aware of this was going on and give you an opportunity to ask any questions or raise any concerns about contracting with one of your own. So the, the arrangements are, are pretty similar this year as last year. We're gonna, we're gonna contract with two firms. HCR Trucking, which is over at Fernald Lumber, they've been doing some repair work for us. They're gonna be a new contractor for us. And what's Ben's company's name? All Seasons Landscaping? Is that right? We'll be doing it again. So we're gonna contract a total of four trucks, two from each of those firms, which is more than we've had contracted in the past. We're gonna have a good-sized fleet for plowing. We're feeling really good about where we are in terms of personnel and, and equipment. We're gonna rejigger the plow, plow roots a little bit. Sean's been working on that to take advantage of the fact that we have more trucks at our disposal. We're also gonna do something new that we, we kinda dreamed of last year but couldn't pull it off, and that is staging material, sand, out on 156 at All Seasons Landscaping's property. We're gonna bring sand there throughout the season and allow those trucks that are doing that side of town, the, they're basically the two sides of Patuka Way. They're gonna source their sand out there.
Prevents that long trip back and forth.
Right.
Nice.
So it's a, it's probably gonna save 40 minutes round trip of-
Every time.
Every time, going back and forth to Smoke Street. We've never been able to do something like that before, so we're gonna try it out. We have the loading capability there at All Seasons, so it doesn't cost us any equipment anywhere else. And it should speed up delivery to those two, two, there's kinda the north side and the west side of Patuka Way is really what's at stake there. Those are almost all gravel roads, with the exception of Mountain and Lakeview. So we're hoping that really picks up some efficiency. We've got smaller trucks usually over there. We're still gonna have to run one of our six-wheelers out either with salt ahead of the storm on Mountain and Lakeview, or for, Mountain and Lakeview in particular, they're bigger, they're wider, or for the really big storms that we need big pushes for, we'll have to send our big trucks out there at some point during the storm. But I think it's gonna be a, a nice efficiency improvement.
Are we, do we, are we paying All Seasons extra for the use of that?
A little, yeah, a little bit more on an hourly basis. It's kinda buried in the, the cost of the, they're, we're basically hiring them for one and a half-ton trucks with loading services, and that's how we packaged it in there.
And are we using, besides these two companies, are we using any other contractors?
No, we have one that's kinda gonna be kind of on-call if we need them in a crunch or to fill a hole. That's Champion. That's worked for us before. And everything else will be in-house staff and our vehicles and our people.
Nice.
Where are 156s that are still here?
Uh-
Boston-Bardary Lane.
There you go. Thank you. Yeah, segregated, you know, this is the town stuff and, you know, yeah.
Do we have any property out there, the town, that we could-
We, we, that's where we started this process of, you know, what do we have? And the only things that we have are right on, right on 156. It's, it's not a good place to-
Just out in the open.
Yeah. And, and there's one parcel of the street from you that's just ledge, and it would not be good for loading sand.
Put whatever you want there.
Yeah. We, we did, we went through that exercise and said, what do we own out there? What's, you know, what's within striking distance? We had reached out to another landowner over there, but that didn't come together, just to try this out. You know, we'll see how it goes. It, it may be that the, you know, staging of the stuff takes too much time to make it worthwhile. We, we don't know. We've never done it before, but-
Good thing to try.
We're gonna try it out. Other than that, we're feeling pretty good about winter.
Good.
Which I don't think you've ever heard me say.
No. No, that's good.
Is Sean gonna be tracking, like, the mileage of the routes, the number of times they're driven, few, you know, against fuel cost, against time? Just so we can get all those metrics that we've been dying to get?
Yeah, we, we don't have the equipment to do, you know, you can do, back up. We have routes. That's generally what each of those trucks is gonna work on, but in each storm, things move around. You get, you know-
Yeah.
Truck breaks down, or, you know, you know, things get shuffled around. You get behind in one place, you gotta move around. So we'll have some ballpark information on that stuff. We'll be tracking our material use by truck. We can do mileage by truck. We'll know, we're gonna map the routes in a way, you know, it's been done with a highlighter and a piece of paper before. That's going into GIS now, so we'll be able to do a little bit of route-by-route kinda things. What else did you have on your list of things that we were gonna measure? We don't have the equipment to measure salt application. You know, there, there's a lot of great stuff out there that you can put on trucks that will, you can even, you know, manage that remotely now.
Right, right.
We, we don't have that kinda hardware, but-
Well, we know, like, if we buy a certain amount of salt, right, a certain amount of cubic yards-
Yep.
And we use it all in a season, and then we simply logged that, this road got salt.
Oh, sure, yeah, that we can do.
Or this route got salt, and then at the end, we can divide it out, and we'll know that, you know, you know, this route got 12% of the salt, and that route got 9% of the salt, and so on, and then you can divvy out the costs that way.
Roughly. Yeah, that's, that's-
It's not exact science.
What would be the purpose of that, for knowing that of how much times we salt on a paved road?
Um, just that, it, it all factors into that cost per mile, maintenance costs. Right? Salt factors into paved roads where it doesn't factor into a dirt road, for example. So that's part of the per-mile cost of maintaining a paved road. And that's, that was one of the, that was one of the questions that we were asked, one of the last couple of town meetings.
Came up in the Ledge Farm, came up in the Ledge Farm context of-
Like, how much are we paying per mile for road maintenance? We're like, we don't know. We never tracked it before. So these tracking exercises, you know, tracking the miles and the fuel and the materials and the, you know, the vehicles and the repairs per, you know, whatever, it all helps to determine exactly what we're investing into maintaining, you know, the roads.
We'll, we'll also use it in the event of, you know, major, major events with FEMA reimbursement potential. You know, we'll, we'll have the level of detail needed to get emergency funding, you know, if, if we ever have an opportunity to supply for that stuff. Like, the Mother's Day floods was one of those events where money became available. If you could, you could show how you spent the money, you could get reimbursed for it.
I think one of the things too was that, at town meeting a year ago, there was a desire for greater transparency in the budget, in the highway department budget, and, you know, what was being spent on dirt roads versus paved roads, and that kinda stuff. So just trying to get a little more granular in the tracking of it. I'm not sure that that, like, the example that you just gave for salt, like, that feels like that would be real fuzzy math to me, to say-
Yeah, I was spitballing, but, but yeah.
How much did we use, and then try to assess it per road? I'd rather see us, in an ideal world, get to the point where we actually have equipment that tracks that, but-
Yeah, that's the-
That would be a big-
That would be, yeah, that would be the-
Yep.
A good standard approach, yeah.
And then what do you do with that information, right?
Yeah, we're learning how to collect it-
Yeah.
Right now, honestly.
But you don't wanna collect it just to collect it?
No, no, no. We're, we're putting it in, you know, a format you can use.
Yeah.
It'll be the first time we have that level of detail in our data.
Yep.
We'll know what we're actually using and what works and what doesn't, and the next year, we tweak it. We'll, we'll continue to try and automate that, that data collection process, but-
Good. Yeah, that's a good start.
I mean, ultimately, that might be something that gets put in the town report. This past year, we spent, you know, X per mile for the paved roads and X per mile for dirt roads, you know, and that, and then that's about as transparent as you can get with explaining your expenses, you know? And that number will fluctuate from year to year with the price of salt, the price of fuel, the price of oil for asphalt.
Weather.
Weather.
Oh, yeah, weather.
Yes.
It's, it's-
Kind of a big, kind of an important variable.
Yeah. It's the shiv and seal coat line-
I know what shiv it is, yeah.
That confuses everybody.
It's a big number that's put in there, and everybody goes, where's it going? He's, well, it goes everywhere.
Well, no, they go, that's all we're spending on the paved roads.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right?
Misunderstanding about the nature of that.
Disinterpreted right.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Cool. Well, that's good progress, Chris. Really happy Sean's on board.
Mm-hmm.
Way better than the one we had a couple of weeks ago.
The guy we had last year was a schmuck.
And he's, he's back on track?
Yeah, all good.
He's in the groove and-
Yep.
Good.
Full speed ahead.
Yep. He is juggling all kinds of stuff.
Nice.
Outstanding. So is there anything in this contract that you wanted to point out to us?
No. I just, I just wanna make sure it's publicly disclosed and discussed and-
Yep. Yeah, I have no problem with the, the town contracting with Ben's company.
Yeah, it's an existing relationship that predates his service on the board, and he can-
Well, it's under contract.
Yeah, yeah.
So we can fire him too.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay.
The town is protected.
Yeah, but there, I mean, there are insurance requirements and all those things that come along with that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Anything else on that?
I have nothing else.
Okay. All right. Emergency lane policy. So at our last meeting, we had a motion we made, provided that we were going to, or the four, the four items that we identified were to update and finalize the emergency lane policy. That was the first one. The second was to conduct a road-by-road emergency lane evaluation with input from residents. Third item was to explore the betterment assessment option. And the last one was to create a definition of standards for existing Class V roads distinct from our new construction standards. So assuming that these are in, in, in our order of priority, the first item that we're gonna take up is updating and finalizing the emergency lane policy. Now I think we're gonna have to take a parallel track on some of these in the weeks and months ahead, because doing all the, you know, evaluating the roads and having resident input, I think we're gonna have to take a little bite every week, right, between now and-
We've gotta-
March, March 1st was our deadline, right?
We've gotta get the policy done first.
Yeah.
The update, finalize, emergency lane policy. Clarify that. That's what we're looking to do.
So-
We have a policy.
Yes.
That's the state.
And it's, yeah, it's got, I'm trying to, there it is. I mean, there's definitely some, some issues with it, you know, and, you know, think- I mean, there's definitely some, some issues with it, you know, and, you know, think back to our conversation with council last, uh, before last meeting. There's holes in it. Part of what we need to do, I think we should, like, really put some effort into making sure that it is consistent with the spirit of the RSA, not just the, the, the letter of the law.
So, I have.
Yeah, but also, you know, I think the road standards that we come up with are gonna factor into this. And I think we should definitely build in a mechanism for periodic review. Because any road that, for whatever reason, becomes an emergency lane, it's not a, it's not meant to be a in perpetuity thing. So we should have a mechanism to evaluate or reevaluate on, you know, some interval that we can agree on. I'm not sure, like, every year would be practical, cause that, that could be time consuming. You know, every two, three, two years, three years, five years, whatever, we could, I mean, we can chew on that some more.
So, I have a question about, um, the efficiency of having this discussion without the two other members of the board here. Not that I, not that I wanna drag this process out.
Right.
But.
That is, yeah.
We could have a conversation tonight and at the next meeting, they could be here and we'll end up repeating the whole thing and, or they'll have input that we didn't consider.
Very true.
So it's, you know, just from an efficiency perspective. My other question is, is there a way that, you know, people can really buckle down, do their homework and provide comments that Chris can circulate prior to the next meeting?
Yeah.
So that we don't go in circles during that discussion.
Right, we don't wanna be doing our research and reading during the meeting.
Yeah. And I.
Well, that's a, I mean. I particularly, you know, when it comes to emergency lanes, and I'll go out on a limb and stick my, and I'll say this right now, is to revamp our statute on it, to still consist with them being emergency lanes is a policy that's going to be coming up again in five years and being the same predicament that we're in now. Shouldn't we be looking at a beneficial way to get out of the emergency lanes as either making them real town roads? I mean, revamping the policy to specify certain things doesn't really get us anywhere, in my opinion, towards what you wanna do with that policy. I mean, I've read the policy, I'm reading it right here, I know what it says and, you know, the point is, the same policy that whatever we do today can be revised for five more years. And then we're back into the same situation we've been talking about for how many months or year or whatever we're at now.
Yeah.
Surely moving into the direction of whether we're going to, you know, make them town roads, set a standard and go like, go towards a situation like that? And to see if that's the way we, the public wants to go? Keeping emergency lanes, I don't think benefits anybody and it doesn't benefit the town. It was a Band-Aid they stuck on in 95 and it's been a reoccurring pulling off, putting it on, putting it off for the past 20 years.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with you. I definitely think we gotta get out of the emergency lane business. But I think we should be careful to not tie the hands of a future board. Because there may come up a distinct and, uh, you know, beneficial and, and necessary, you know, a need may come up in the future.
We might not have to get out of the full entire emergency lane business, but there's roads that are basically almost ready to become, if we had a standard, to be a road, so we can take that 10 miles of emergency lane and maybe knock it down to three miles of emergency lanes.
Right, and I think that's, that's what we, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's.
But it's clear to anybody listening at home where we team to go, instead of sounding off right now saying that, well, we'll wait till everybody comes and we'll go read a discussion. People really wanna know where we're going.
Right, right.
And we gotta be specific and clear on that agenda to keep not, you know, I mean, and that's where my opinion is right, you know, is where I wanted.
I personally think we were pretty clear at the meeting. I think we, we laid out a pretty clear motion, pretty clear steps. I think that there, to Tony's point earlier, there, there are parallel paths. I think the, you know, I personally think that the idea of trying to, you know, get some, do some research on this betterment assessment, figure out if that's a path to town taking over the road. We've gotta do some homework on that. To your point, there may be some roads that stay as emergency lanes, right? But we agreed as a board that we needed to look at the policy. And, you know, Ben and Tyler felt, you know, pretty strongly about that. Chris has given us a draft. Maybe it doesn't change, but to me, that is the first step.
I guess, well, then we'll look at the policy, as, again, I stated where I wanna see it go, so.
Yeah.
We did, you know, we did discuss the betterment assessment option as a mechanism for getting the roads that, you know, that, that can, uh, become town roads with some work. Um, you know, and those are denser residential neighborhoods, right? So, um, that would be the mechanism for, for achieving that, rather than saying you can become a, you know, a town road, but you gotta pay for all your improvements first. I mean, that, that was just, that was just a non-start, right? So there is a mechanism available for those dense neighborhoods that, that are, yeah. But there's also, um, you know, we, we've seen in the assessment, there are, uh, some dead end roads that serve no one and nothing and roads that are marked private property, some that are basically just really long driveways that are, you know, serve one house. You know what I mean? There's, those clearly disqualified under the RSA, let alone the town policy. You know, those are the, the low hanging fruit ones that I was saying at the last meeting, that we could probably agree pretty easily, uh, to shed those, right? And get that, get that burden off the town, right? There may be some where, where we may, um, we may, uh, maintain up to a point and then stop. Like, the, like, the main, the main artery into an area and then all the little spurs that, that don't have a public benefit. You know, we could take care of it up to that point and let the, e- each of those neighborhoods, you know, contract on their own or, uh, and there was one, Dolph Dam Road. Like, we're, we're maintaining the road, but not to the dam? You know what I mean? I mean, the, the, those are just basic examples of things that we can look at to adjust. But, but my point with, with fixing the policy was that, you know, a future board may have a need to declare an emergency. We, and we, we don't know what the future holds. So I wouldn't wanna either, either nix the option of a future emergency lane or just leave it as is, because in its current state, you know, this is the current version of that Band-Aid that started in 95. And it's, it just got us too deep into the wrong side of the law. And we don't want, we don't wanna inflict that on a future board, right? Like you said, you don't wanna come full circle back to that same problem again, when we can. I hope we can fix it in, you know, 2019, 2020. But to Donna's point, we do have research to do. We, we need to look into, uh, the betterment assessment, um, you know, all the requirements, statutes, what we can and can't do. You know, we need to, we need to do our homework on that to find out what, uh, what some valid proposals are.
So what we need is an action plan.
An action plan.
What I wanna stop is just having the same conversations over and over and over again. So I think, uh, what I would love to see is a timeline of, you know, how are we gonna do this? And, um, how are we gonna handle it with, you know, different select board members having travel schedules and stuff like that? And, you know, not being able to attend a meeting, but also, but, you know, being able to make sure that we have their input and can move forward. So what I would like to see is a schedule. You know, we outlined what our steps are gonna be. Look at the policy, right? I, I think that there are some things that Chris suggested that are, are good additions. I don't see that it's a radical, um, rewrite. So let's, let's do that, let's check it off. And then let's talk about how are we gonna do the evaluations? Once we have that in place, you know, how are we going to do them? What's the shape of that conversation gonna be? Can we do three a night? Do we have to maybe meet two nights, one week to get enough of them in against the deadline?
Yeah, I hadn't considered that, but, yeah.
Who, who's gonna take the lead on the betterment assessment?
Well, first, to get to the betterment assessment, we need to know the cost of what it's gonna, obviously, you know, what we think a road's gonna cost to fix.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with that, but it's just kind of like, we, we have some assumptions about how it works. And, you know, I, I don't know that we have all of the details on how that would be, how that would work, unless you think we do.
I think that's easy. Um, the hard part is what, what, what's the standard that you're gonna require to make a road a town road? You, you have, you have a standard for what can, and if you read the existing policy, existing policy says, this is what it takes to be declared, the initial declaration of an emergency lane. And you really don't have a policy about what does it take to remain an emergency lane.
Yep.
Um, and you don't have a policy on what is the standard at which you will accept a road that used to be, you know, that isn't newly constructed.
Is that where the existing Class V roads policy comes in?
I, I wondered if that meant to say, a, we, we don't have a, we don't have a standard for our town roads. You know, we don't, we don't have an engineering standard. Anything we build new, we, we, we have it built to an engineered standard with state specs and we, uh, anything that we, uh, that we reconstruct, like ledge farm, we have an engineered standard that we do that to.
Yeah.
Um, we don't have a standard for what do we maintain our roads at? Pretty good on our Class V roads. We don't, we don't, and we don't hire an engineer to tell us whether or not we're up to standard. We just, we have people that can make those decisions. We don't know what it's gonna take, like Moore's Road is hanging out there as an approved road, waiting for acceptance. If the owners wanna come back to you and say.
We don't even know if they still wanna do it.
We don't either, but you, you, if they do come, you're not gonna know what to tell them.
Right.
Because you don't know what your conditions are. So, uh, before you ever get to a betterment assessment conversation, you gotta have a rough order of magnitude of what it's gonna cost. You have to have some sense of what, what is it gonna take to make a road eligible to be a town road?
Well, we have to have a standard for that road.
Right, a standard drive.
You gotta have it, you gotta have a standard. You, we, we'd love to have, and what, what the staff gave you a few months ago was, here's what we think a standard ought to be for an emergency lane, just for the safety of our people and our equipment.
Yeah.
Not a, not an engineering exercise. It was, uh, these are the people driving the trucks. This is what the truck specs tell us. This is what the thing ought to be before we send our people down and our trucks down it. So you have a, a proposal from us that says, this is what we think the standard for just an emergency lane is. And we didn't get any farther than that. We went out, we went out and surveyed it all because you were afraid of what the consequences of that standard was gonna be.
Yeah.
Multiply that by 10 if you wanna talk about taking it over as a town road, because the standards are gonna be significantly higher. You're not gonna wanna accept a lot of roads with the liabilities that come with them, in a lot of cases.
And we'll be a little more clear on that. For like liability purposes, for what you're saying, I, it's.
If you, if you take on a, if you take on the ownership of a road, you take on the responsibility for, um, you know, what, what happens if you change the grade of that road in order to maintain it better? And, and you end up washing out somebody's lawn because of it? If there is a pothole that appears in a road or an outcropping of ledge that appears in a road, in a town road, uh, when the town is put on notice of that deficiency, we have to act. We, we, you know, and if we don't, we're liable for what comes of our inaction.
How much greater is that, that liability gonna be on new roads that get accepted versus what we have now?
Uh, well, when you, when you think about the, the condition of the roads that we don't own, that we maintain, they are so far below the roads that we do own as Class V roads, um, you're gonna, before you accept those liabilities and those maintenance burdens, you're gonna wanna, you're gonna wanna set standard of what will you accept, just like you would with Moore's Road. You went into town meeting and said, yeah, we'll talk about accepting Moore's Road, but it's gotta be up to a standard. Where, you can't just.
But, but my, my, my assumption was this create definition of standards for existing Class V roads, that that was that exercise.
Existing Class V roads?
Well, Class V roads.
I mean, Bart had said that we need to have a standard that accommodates those.
I don't think existing was supposed to be there.
Is it supposed to be pre-existing or is it?
All.
All Class V roads? Okay, class, class, we can, we can create a standard for town Class V gravel and asphalt roads that we can use to.
Then that, that sets the bar for town.
What is a, what does a newly accepted road have to look like? Is that the order in which you'd wanna?
Well, I think so.
Okay.
Does, does that make sense?
Well, they would be elements of the same standard, right? So, uh, standard for new construction, but, you know, an, an existing road that is being improved, right? Cause Bart had said that we need to accommodate things that started out as a cow path. They were never engineered, you know, back in 1820, they were never engineered to a 21st century standard. So we need to accommodate that.
Yes.
To some degree.
If you, if you wanna get to the point of accepting this town roads, yes, you do. You need to set that standard so that, so that voters and boards know what this means when you're accepting a road and people that are paying to improve it knows, know what they're buying.
Right.
But is that not the Class V road standard? Doesn't exist today, but.
If you could, you could set a Class V standard and we would take that and we would give it to the highway department and say, go maintain our roads at this standard or, or shoot for this.
Do most towns have that?
I don't know that they're that strict about it. It, it, um, there's certainly, there's a state guideline for how to construct a road and this is how, you know, what it ought to be. And, um, those are the, the kind of guidance that we would use. And for the most part, I think our town roads probably do meet that state standard in terms of their base and their depth and their width and those kinds of things. You, we'd have to, we'd wanna talk with our council about, do you wanna set that standard or does that expose you to some liability?
Sure.
Right, so we didn't get through that, but we could do that, that's pretty easy. And that would be, this is what we're trying to do for Class V roads. And if then you wanna say, okay, new roads, not newly constructed roads, but old roads that become Class V roads, do you want them to match that standard before you accept them? Or do you want to be a little forgiving in?
Yeah.
Particularly in width, where you.
Yeah.
You know that.
I think that would be the biggest variable, because space is an issue. But, you know, the type of material and the grade and the drainage would all be consistent. I think it's the width that's gonna be the biggest variable factor for existing roads.
Right, and you can, and if you wanna draw a standard that says, okay, for roads that have been around for a long time, we just don't happen to own them, you wanna become a town road, here's the standard.
Yeah.
Moore's Road would be, you know, that's what, that's what we're waiting on there.
That's where I think we should be going with this.
Do you wanna do that first? Cause we can, we can, we can generate those standards. We can tell you what they, what we would suggest they look like, you know?
Okay.
You know, we can, we can get our engineer to weigh in on that. We can use the state's recommendations for that. We can, um, we can give you a starting point for that, sir.
Let, let's start with that, cause that seems like that would feed into patching up this policy as well. Because we can factor that into road condition requirements, you know, before and after emergency lane status, right? That would feed into this to some degree.
Yeah, I think you, you would probably say, this is the Class V standard, you know, for newly constructed roads and existing town roads. This is the standard for old cow paths that are growing up to become Class V roads.
And then.
And this is the emergency lane.
Level.
Standard, right?
Yeah.
We, we've given you this one, what we think the baseline, emergency lane standard ought to be.
Yeah.
Ignoring the base and a lot, the road base in a lot of ways, but.
Yeah.
You know? But sure, if you wanna, if you wanna go at it from that top down, uh, we can give you something to start with there.
Okay, yeah, that does make sense. But also, we need to do that parallel track of brushing up on betterment assessments. But also, we need to do that parallel track of brushing up on Betterment assessments. I think we should all do that. Cause, you know, you, you know, the legal issue, read it and it may seem one way to you and then somebody else reads it a little, everybody's interpretation's a little different. So I think we all need to make the effort to read through that stuff. And I don't even know what that stuff is or where it is, but if you find us some reading material.
Yep.
If NHMA has some nice articles and handouts, pamphlets, anybody that wants to talk to us about them, open to it.
Okay.
Chris, Wendy, so when would you think you would have, uh, something for us to react to?
I don't know if we can get our engineers to weigh in on anything. What, what we will start with is the state standard. It's a published, you know, I remember what it's called, geometric design standards for Class V roads or something like that. And they have an asphalt and a gravel.
Can we incorporate them by reference or is, do we just say, you know, like what, what they use?
No, there's a, there, you can get super technical with it, but there is a couple pages of it that the, the layman can understand, so. That's what we would start with. We'd probably have a conversation with our engineer about, you know, how realistic is this standard for our existing Class V roads? We have a conversation with our attorney about how much do we wanna put in writing about our standard for existing Class V roads? Uh, so the existing Class V road standard, we could probably turn around for your next meeting. The, the, the-
Which will be open for discussion.
Sure, yeah, no, this is your decision.
It'll all be open for discussion.
Well, the state standard is the state standard, so it'll be understanding what the state standard is.
And then, uh, maybe a couple weeks later, we talk about the, the little sister of that, which is the roads coming up to,
Yep.
to that standard. What can we live without in that standard? From an operation on safety point of view and a liability point of view, that's where we probably wanna get our engineer to think a little bit more about it. And we've, and we've all acknowledged in this process that there is a little bit of case by case to be done here.
Yep.
But I think you wanna set it up so you do as little of that as possible, but-
Okay. That works.
When do we feel that we wanna have that wrapped up by? I mean, March first is the grand deadline for all of it, but do, do you think that's something we can turn around by, by the time we break in December? Like ten, eleven weeks?
Yeah, I would hope so.
I would, yeah, I'd be, depending for that at least.
Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah.
I mean, if it takes the first to be twice in a week, what we gotta do, we're gonna do. It doesn't, if we find the time to get it, to get it done, it's what we're gonna have to do.
Right. Tony, like, right now it looks like I'm gonna have to be traveling on the fourth.
Of November?
November. Um, so that would be not the next meeting, but the one out. So I'm just wondering if, like, in trying to accommodate travel schedules and stuff like that, if we can, like, maybe break schedule a little bit and do some workshops that kind of accommodate schedules, cause I know Tyler struggles with the same thing, so.
Yeah, and Ben's gonna be struggling with that more too. I'm, I'm, I'm open to that.
So if we can maybe try to work some workshop things in there around meetings to keep it moving.
Yeah. So we'll keep regular business, the regular select board meetings, but-
If we have to.
This special work that we're undertaking, we'll save that for the workshops.
Well, we can do it in a regular meeting if everybody's gonna be here.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly. But if we need to break away, then we'll, we'll dedicate the workshop time to
Yes.
this work and then save everything else for regular meeting. Okay. And yeah, given that Ben and Tyler aren't here, that's probably as deep as we should go into the subject. But they're gonna get the same material that you're gonna find for us?
Yeah.
Chris, and, uh-
Yeah, so I'm gonna get you homework on Betterment assessment process and a starting point for a standard for Class V roads.
Yep. Okay, anything else on that? All right, I lost my agenda. Oh, there it is. All right, any other business? Any action items for next meeting? I think we just-
They're all Chris's.
Determine that homework.
They're all Chris's.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Well, one, yeah, once he hands off to us, then it's in our court, so.
Your next meeting, what do we have?
October twenty-one?
October twenty-one.
Tax deed waivers and election prep.
Yeah, I don't know if tax deed waivers are gonna be ready. We're waiting on mortgage deed research, uh, budget planning we just talked about earlier, and the moderator has asked to come back and try and button up some of the election stuff so they can, you know, we, we started talking about a lot of that stuff. I think she'd like to know what direction we're going in a lot of fronts and-
Who was that?
The moderator.
Unlike what?
Moderator.
Uh, she wanted to talk about the checkout process and, um, we, we just identified meals as another thing and, um, you know, I'll, I'll give you more fill-in as it approaches, but I think the idea is let's, let's do this now and then not meet again for the presidential primary and, and all that, so, uh, we're gonna, I think, try and put that all to bed.
Has the primary date been set?
Uh, no, that reminded me. It's shaping up to be February eleventh. All of the informal signals we're getting are it's, it's coming together for February eleventh. Other states aren't trying to move.
Okay.
Nobody's gonna put it in writing for a while, but it's starting to firm up around the eleventh. So you might put that in your calendar now as a-
Yep.
And I did promise I'd be there early with the rest of them, so.
So, um-
I'll have to do the early shift too. I can do that early shift and then come back for counting at night, but-
I was gonna ask you to do non-public again for ten minutes or so before you, uh, escape, if you have no other business.
Yeah, I don't think we have any other business.
Can you send, I'm trying to go through and look back all my, that original item that you, the plumer sculpt that we had for emergency lanes, what we kinda made up.
The draft?
Yeah.
The road standard?
Yeah.
Proposed road standard? Yeah, I'll send you that.
Eight months ago, whatever, we, trying to go through all my, I say it every one, but-
Yeah, I, I, I'm constantly resending your stuff and I don't wanna bury you in noise, but you, you wanna, what do you, you want the, the existing policy, the proposed revision?
Yeah, side by side.
Well, he marked up the policy with comments, but it's easy.
You want that one? Is that a good one to send out again?
Well, actually though, you did, you, you didn't copy and paste everything.
Right, I cherry picked it.
You did cherry pick.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's cause I didn't wanna give you draft language on everything. I just, I didn't wanna overstep, so. You wanna stay with standards? I'll send you what you're looking for, John, but should we just stick with the standard question for now?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I mean, really, this, we rebooted our plan with this, so let's not get too wrapped up in our, in our old directions. I mean, they may factor in as, as we're moving forward, but we'll take that up as, as they, as they arise. Okay. All right, well, if we don't have any other business, this concludes the public portion of this meeting. And we are now gonna go into non-public session. And I'll take a motion for A and B.
Yep.
I'll make a motion that we go into non-public for RSA ninety-one, uh, A dash, uh, three, A and B. Is that right?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Rule call vote.
John Mooring, yes.
Tony Dumas, yes.
Donna Davis, yes.
All right, we are now in non-public session. Thank you all for watching. See you next time.